Six o'clock.
Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, the seventh of April. This is a regular board meeting, and first we have a public hearing regarding the 2025-26 budget. The Little River presentation will be rescheduled to the 21st time?
Yes.
Uh, Matt Rogers couldn't make it from Bella today, so, um, we will do that another time. Uh, so first off, we're gonna talk about the budget, and then have some public comment after the board comments. And I'm gonna do this from over here.
So then you can just toggle. There you go.
It's not working.
Is it a PDF done?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead and share that, and then you go back to that.
I have to wait around.
And if you want me to come over.
Give me a second.
Okay. That's what you want to share?
Yeah.
Oh, you have enough points. Okay. So leave that there. Go back to Google. Share your screen. Window. Yeah.
It wasn't there.
Yeah, no, I know. And then you can just, uh, there you go. And you can either have that, or you can just be on that, whichever you prefer.
I need to be on that.
Okay, so click on, um, Yeah, that should, yeah, cuz that's, alright, so that's, that's sharing. You're good. So everyone online can see that. You want that big anyway. Alright. The first thing I wanna talk about is, um, uh, property development in Manans. This is how Manans grows its revenue, uh, by developing properties and, uh, property improvements. So, over the last three years, we've seen some growth. It's a good trend. Uh, can you get on the next slide, please? The amount of growth has been just shy over the last two years of 1%. 1% growth is our target for, uh, property development. Uh, that's why we've been focusing on redevelopment along Broadway, and some of the other parcels that, uh, are being developed in the village.
If people look at your middle, I have my middle.
Alright, so 1% growth, uh, on the property assessed value side helps us, uh, keep taxes around the 2% level. Here are the three budgets for the three different funds, including the proposed budget for 25-26. Just wanna highlight some of the things on the positive side. Uh, under general government support, we have $250,000 worth of grants that were issued, uh, that we have not received funds on yet. They're reimbursements. So, uh, I plug that into the budget. On the building department side, because of the development that is going on in the village, we increased that line by 25,000 uh, for the cannabis tax. Uh, we've increased that by 35,000 to 110,000. That's a, a pretty conservative estimate, uh, uh, on interest. Uh, last year in the fiscal budget, we included zero. Uh, this year, we will earn roughly $65,000 on interest and on our, uh, deposits and investments. Um, on the expense, so basically that, uh, our revenues from year to year increased by 3, uh, 383,866 dollars. Over on the expense side, uh, some of the changes from year to year, we had, uh, cultural and recreation, that's parks. The park programs, that was up 30,000. In buildings, we increased that by 15,000. Uh, fire department, we increased that by 60,000 uh, for snow to cover the increased costs of salt. Uh, and overtime, we increased that by 10,000. In the codes department, we added 25,000 for a fire inspector. Uh, we adjusted, uh, some salaries, uh, and that, uh, total was 30,000 increase. Uh, let's see, we have 5,000 additional for conferences and NICOM. Parks, we included an additional 7,000 to cover, uh, some of the programs that we have in the parks, including the concerts, food trucks, et cetera. Celebration and events, uh, we added 7,000 to that. Uh, garbage, we increased that by 25,000. That covers, uh, disposal fees, which, uh, recycling, just as an example, went from, uh, $25 per ton to, uh, last bill was, I think, $145,000. That's now 160,000, or $160 a ton. Uh, so that added 25,000. State retirement has estimated that our contribution for retire, for the retirement system is up 100,000. Uh, and our medical insurance is, uh, for this year, uh, for village employees is up 25,000. So again, uh, to balance that out, uh, expenses year to year increased 383,866 dollars. So if you add up the revenues, if you add up the revenues, uh, each year, the village has been using fund balance to essentially balance the budget from the other revenue items. Last year, the reserve funds applied was $750,000. This year, uh, to balance the budget, we need 518,000, which means that $231,000 stays within the reserve fund. So that's a positive trend that we will hopefully continue to, uh, to, uh, decline, uh, and keep those funds in reserves. Um, I wanna highlight a couple things. There's, I guess, some confusion, uh, over the, the tax cap formula, which was, uh, enacted in mass, or, uh, uh, New York State General Law, Chapter 97 recently. The tax cap applies to our tax levy, not our tax rate. The tax levy is the amount that a municipality needs to charge in order to balance and pay for the budget. The tax rate is what you charge, the tax levy, in order to get there. So, this year, Manans' tax levy actually decreased 0.685%. And the reason for that is because we have, uh, two properties, uh, become pilots, which means pilot, uh, payment and lieu of taxes and come off the tax rule. Uh, those, therefore, those funds are removed from the tax, property tax. They come in as pilot payments. Therefore, our total property tax levy decreased by $34,987. So our tax levy decreased by 6.685, okay? The Office of State Controller this year uh, determined the inflation factor that municipalities should, uh, should expect is 2.99%. If the inflation is 2.99%, and you're limited by the tax cap at 2%, I don't know how that math maths. However, our tax levy actually decreased, so we are under the 2% tax cap. The 2% rate does not apply to the tax rate that we charge proper owners. For instance, the town of Polynice's tax rate this year, that everybody who owns property paid in January, increased 2.1%. They were under the tax cap for their levy. Auburn County, also under the levy, but Auburn County taxes increased 2.7%. Not gonna go to the expense page. First we'll go over how our revenues break down. A property tax is obviously the largest percentage of the taxes that we raise in order to pay for the services that we have here in the village of Manans. That is the easiest thing for us to control by the tax rate. County sales tax. With everything that is going on, uh, in the, in the economy currently, uh, we put in a very conservative slight increase in county sales tax, uh, for this coming year. Basically, we set it, uh, in my budget, uh, at exactly what we're expecting to earn for this year. I didn't want to overinflate it, and as it turns out, with the economic turmoil we're facing right now, it seems like that was probably a good decision. I included in this year's budget the separation for pilots. There are three pilots that Manans has. It's Regeneron, uh, Solgeron, and Castleman Electric, or actually, it's Castleman Solar. Uh, they, those are the three pilots that we, we, uh, that we have on the books. That money now comes in in a separate line. That's the proper way through OCA, uh, OFC, that you're supposed to account for that stuff. Uh, under general government support, I included the $250,000 for the grants. Uh, cannabis tax is now 1.7% of our total revenues. I included the interest that we receive on the funds since we changed our banking relationships, and the reserve fund applies, like I said, is the 518,091. On the expense side, public safety is, uh, is the largest part of our budget. That includes police, fire, and codes. Uh, and codes includes, uh, uh, the building department, code enforcement, uh, and fire inspections. Uh, undistributed costs are insurance costs, uh, state retirement, and things that are distributed over multiple, uh, sections of the village. Transportation is, uh, basically DPW that includes roads, snow, uh, uh, garbage collection, et cetera. Uh, administration is the cost for the board, uh, and the cost of, uh, the clerk's office is out of general government support. Uh, and there are some still expenses for this year for the court. Uh, there's one month out of this budget year where the court is still running, and then there are costs where we have to wind down the court operations. So there are still some costs. There are also, on the revenue side, there were also some fines that we're expecting to collect in the next fiscal year. That's how our, our dollars, every dollar that the village, uh, spends is broken down. So basically, where is that at? So in order to make all of this work, uh, our tax rate goes from 9.13% to 9.37%, which is an increase of 2.64%. Over the last 10 years, the average is 2.69%. So we're basically just, uh, just below the 10-year average. 24 cents, basically, on a $200,000 assessed house is, is $48. Uh, you wanna go to the next one?
That's one.
That's it. Alright. Uh, I have. So, from the board, do I have any questions?
I have, I have a few. Um, the first one is we put in police fees. We didn't raise it drastically, but when that report was run, it looks like those are all the grant, like, the reimbursements that we get. Are we no longer receiving them?
Are you talking about the, the funds received from, from the analogy?
Uh, the Carfax, Lexus, Nexus, those ones that we're getting? I mean, currently, we have over $4,000. We're only budgeting 500. So we thought we were gonna look at that.
You know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not very versed in that, so I'm not really sure. Uh, that's usually stuff that we don't, as a department, we don't inventory. The checks come in for like, uh, accident reports and stuff like that. It's not a check that, or, or, like, when they do it online, we don't, we never see it, but I'm not really sure.
Yeah, no, it wasn't necessarily a question for you. I just thought we were gonna look at that and maybe increase that. Um, we also talked about the public works with the dumpster rentals, putting some money in there. It's still at $0.
Uh, I think we put that somewhere. How many times last year did we get the dumpster?
Uh, 14.
So $1,400?
It's $200 every time somebody runs the dumpster?
150, uh, no, it's 100.
So then that, this report is kind of funky then? So currently, they're, in that account, we have almost $5,000.
We didn't get that much.
There's some scrap metal in here also.
That's probably, that's probably what it was, is we, we, we had a bunch of metal that we got from, um,
But I think we should put some money. I mean, people rent the dumpster every year. It's not. Um, you talked about having support fees. There's still $0 in court security. I know the month of June, we have to have security.
What line is it?
Uh, 0100 under village justice. We also have zero printing. Not sure how we're gonna catch fines without mailing anything.
Appreciate it.
There's 5,000, postage 3,000.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna confirm that in the contracted services, we spread that, we added the water worth in, and it got split?
We did.
Okay?
Yeah.
On page six, there's a brand new account, 1430. It just says, no description, consultant, $30,000.
Mary Jane, are you online?
Mary Jane?
I know, we, we talked about that. I believe that was for the grant writer that, uh, that we talked about employing for the rest of the village, and that's something that we'll bring up, uh, later in the meeting.
Then, under, on page 12, under safety inspection, there's now a part-time fire inspector, which was added from the last version of the budget?
I think it's all under. It's all, there's one thing for fire inspector.
Okay. So there's a part-time and a regular.
Yes. It's.
So when we met and did the budget workshop, I was told that the
Well, because right now, they're, they're, they're both doing it, because we're so far behind, but eventually, once Lyle gets done, we won't be doing the fire inspector. It'll be just Ryan.
I understand that. When I did the budget workshop, I asked if this $30,900 included both of them. And now this version has another line for $25,000.
Okay.
I thought it was reversed.
Mary Jane, so.
I mean, if that, that, that amount just.
Mary Jane says there's a separate line item there for part-time fire inspector.
That's what I'm.
That's what, that's, I'm sorry, thought the fact that it was all, the reason I thought it was all together. And the 30, that, the consultant is still, it's, it's a bill, when Bill's done, that's what the consultant's here.
I'm talking, we were going into the new budget with no, the new, with no go.
We're not, he's still got a couple things that we gotta get done, so once we get done, it probably, it probably won't be that much, but that's what we put in for.
Um, under street maintenance, we had money in here for a dumpster?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Phil has to stay until the audit's complete. That's the reason why.
We took it out.
Mine doesn't need it this year.
Okay.
Um,
Um, under street lighting, we talked about the repairs for the lights on Broadway.
Actually, on the bottom of the thing.
Does that include that repair?
The little microphones?
Uh, which lights on Broadway?
Click that.
The ones going over the bridge. We talked about how they need, not replacing them, but the repair. We talked about getting some quotes to make sure we were gonna be able to.
Don and I are still looking into having national records over, like, all the other.
No problem.
Okay. Um, in the senior budget, we agreed to up transportation to 5,000.
That's in the, uh, transfers that I included in the board, uh, email earlier.
Okay. And then there were three places where contracted services were added. Um, one was underwater administration.
Yep, that's water work.
Okay, and then under sewer administration, there was that added, so that's also the water work?
That's correct.
And then the grinder pump repairs, that was added?
Yes.
Okay. Another question.
Okay, so we're gonna agree to amend a couple, a couple of those items. For instance, uh, I see your point on court security for the month of
June.
Um, Jan.
Three court dates, which?
37, right, I think. Or it's four, right?
Three.
Great. Kevin, what's an average laborer?
If you, for all three, if you put in less than a thousand, or less than $3,000, or $3,000, I believe.
Okay, so we can add that as an amendment to the ones we need to make, uh, that I emailed the board at, uh, about earlier. That's agreeable to everybody. What are the others? Molly, the.
Posted?
Uh, the printing?
Printing. I don't know, a thousand bucks?
Or, is that for court?
Yeah.
I don't think you need a thousand for.
I don't know, they're not gonna really need any, because it's gonna be.
I think, I think.
2,000 supplies.
Like, of, like, envelopes and stuff, which.
It's all, it's the only thing they have is, it's under supplies, because the printing is part of their copier, it's, that's all goes under the, it's all on the equipment rental.
Okay.
So that, you don't have to really wear, there won't be any printing. Does the, the paper, the only, if we don't pay for, like, ink or anything, it's all part of the lease. The only good paper is the actual paper, and that'll be under her supplies.
Is there anything else from that?
I mean, I just think we should look at the dumpster rentals and putting money there.
That's revenue anyway, so.
What line is that?
Uh, 1710.
What's that? $3,000?
What's the 3,000? That would be free.
Both of the other stuff.
Any other word?
We get more, it's just a ball.
So I, I don't have any, uh, questions, because I've asked them all already, and they've already been addressed and incorporated. Uh, but I, um, I just wanna thank you for a very transparent budget again this year. This is my 12th budget, and, uh, this has been the most transparent with, uh, allowing the public to speak at the budget workshop and, and since, and, uh, uh, I think that goes a long way. Things that the public has mentioned at the workshop have not only been listened to, but have been incorporated into the budget. Uh, we've had residents, uh, reach out, uh, via email with questions, and we've incorporated that into the budget as well as into, uh, practices going forward, so, um, I, I wanna thank you for that, and, uh, I hope, I, we've even had residents at the last meeting, uh, thank the board for, uh, the transparency and the, uh, peeing up on, on what's in there. So, thank you for that, uh, Mayor, and, uh, the rest of the board.
Alright, we'll go to, uh, uh, this is a public hearing, so the public is allowed to speak. I'm gonna try and ask everyone to stay within five minutes, uh, you know, of, of time, so that we can make sure that everybody had equal opportunity. Uh, so I'll start it off.
Bill? Couple things. Now, has, is the board gonna go over the 2% tax cap from within it or below this?
No, the 2% tax cap applies to the tax levy. The village's tax levy actually decreased this year.
Well, that's good news.
That is good news.
Now, another thing, now, uh, Don, and again, has told me that the village of Manans has got enough road salt when we have snow or ice storm. But we have enough for next year.
Uh, sure, we have entered into a contract with a new salt company, as far as I believe, uh, who, uh, who is, uh, well, well-stocked, uh, and actually provides a better product at a better price.
I should point out, or inform you, that a lot of the local governments in this state and throughout the nation have been short of road salt.
Yep.
And what's gonna, what are they gonna do?
Make it more. Hopefully, it doesn't snow again.
Well, this has been a tough winter, though. Next winter, who knows? It could be just even tougher. So we just gotta be prepared to have enough road salt here.
Agreed.
And, and, and I'm glad that some of my proposed projects that I've been proposing or requesting for several years, it's gonna become a reality in this village, and I'm proud of my victories.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome. Alright, for now.
Thanks, Bill. You're welcome. Doug?
My name's Chuck Price, North Lions Avenue. And I too appreciate the work that's gone into the budget. Having done several budgets over the course of my life, I know a lot of work goes into these things. Uh, one of the things that we made progress on was the dissolution of the court, which freed up about $200,000. And, uh, one question I'd like to have addressed, not necessarily this incident, maybe at the end of my comments, is uh, how that $200,000 in savings was, uh, applied to the budget? Because I couldn't seem to identify it when I went through the next number of pages. Uh, and again, as with any municipal budget, the biggest expense is gonna be in personnel, and that's what we ended up with here. According to Kevin, you know, each time you have a court date, it's about a thousand bucks. Uh, I don't know how many court dates you have over the course of the year, 40, 50?
Six, three a month.
Okay, so you have. Alright, so, so there's close to $50,000, which I would think should show up someplace as a savings that I, I didn't happen to see, along with some of the other administrative, uh, as well. So, you know, I, I would think that in terms of the public safety overtime, that's still a big line. A lot of that was going to the court. I was expecting to see, uh, some savings there. Um, I know that Cini has brought this up a couple of times before, as far as the employee contribution. As a small business owner, I pay about $2,000 a month for a family plan. I would expect public employees to pick up the full brunt as, you know, a business owner would. But I took a look at what PEP, uh, the PEP contract is, and, uh, they're paying between, the employees are paying between 12 and 16% for individual coverage, 27 to 31% for family coverage. I would be curious to know how we compare these, these state averages?
We pay 20%.
Okay.
All the employees pay twenty percent.
And that's regardless of whether it's single or.
And I don't know how they're getting around that because you're having two tiers, but you're you're penalized to somebody for having a family. I think that that's pretty illegal.
I gave you a link to that.
But I guess uh is that half employees or is the are these?
That's a PEP contract. I I wanted to look find something online.
People who work for Pepper stay in place under PEP contract. Because I would like to ask that of PEP tomorrow, that's if that's the case.
There's a link in the email I sent you. So you can look it up yourself.
No, I just I just.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not being that that's why I included the link. So you can see you can see. So so again, that might be something to explore.
So we have labor contracts with the Teamsters and with the PBA. Those contracts require that the contribution stays including in the contract at twenty percent. So changing that outside negotiation negotiations of those contracts, we cannot.
Yeah, and I wouldn't expect a great contract. So the logical thing to do, I would think.
Yes, so I'll give you some examples. Can I give you a couple of things? Okay, so on those on my thing, for instance, this year. We changed the way that we handle retirees who are eligible for Medicare, okay? In several states where our retirees relocated to, we were paying for basically these Cadillac. Contracts for healthcare. We pushed everybody to go to a Medicare Advantage type plan, which basically includes uh all of the services. In addition, we're paying eighteen hundred dollars of their Medicare part B expenses and all told, everybody loves their coverage. And we have saved the village about fifty thousand dollars in cost just to cover those plans that we had uh all, you know, for all of our Medicare eligible retirees.
I think it's fantastic. I identified that. Thank you.
And everybody, you know, was a little nervous at first.
Yes.
But even the one person who was most nervous said, you know what? I have better coverage now and I don't have to pay anything out of pocket. And at the end of the year, we're gonna cut them a check for it. It's eighteen hundred. How much is it down?
Three.
Eighteen hundred.
So yeah, no, I think that's fantastic. Again, I would still keep in mind next time the budget negotiation come around, take a look at what, you know, the uh.
Just to just to compare, I mean, I don't I don't I don't wanna kind of you have plenty of time.
Okay. I'm almost done.
Village Colony pays a hundred percent for their employees. Town Colony pays a hundred percent of the healthcare costs for their employees. So it's difficult to, you know what I mean? Where's the sweet spot?
Yeah.
Traditionally, twenty percent is a cost sharing so that, you know, the the it's not a free benefit that everyone.
Oh, I agree.
Really nearly take advantage of. It's where industry says that it's a fair distribution of costs so that people don't think it's just a throwaway benefit that they can use like the it's going out of style. And then they're costing the healthcare providers, you know, the the most money, which that increases rates and it's just a while from there. So twenty percent is is the industry standard.
And really, the only other question I had, and I know this has come up previously. I don't know if this has been dealt with yet, but as far as part-time and uh elected officials. What benefits uh are available to you outside of your salary?
So uh board members as as uh elected officials, including part-time like the judge and uh and the associate judge are uh eligible for healthcare through the village. So that's that's a benefit that that we get as board members and we're gonna look at some different scenarios to to rein in that potentially over the next year. Uh, so we did uh an analysis of municipalities from uh just over our resident count and just under our resident count. And I shared with the board the breakdown of salaries for those municipalities across the entire range of jobs that are if they exist. From police, you know, to some of them have, you know, full-time fire people, board members, justices, et cetera. I shared that with the board and and ours compensation as far as being board members is is right in line and if not slightly below where uh where some of them are. Um, and, you know, we for the last two years, we have not included a raise uh because I don't think any one of us is here because we expect to make a lot of money.
Yeah, anyhow, I I I don't have any problem with the uh the salaries everybody's earning. I think everybody, you know, earned certainly earns their money. Uh, but again, I I don't think that a part-time employee should necessarily have access to the same benefits as. The hired folks here in the village. So I would ask that you take that into consideration. I think, I'm not sure about you, Brian, but I think everybody else here uh has employment that offers some form of health insurance and benefits. Outside of the village. And so if that were not a benefit. I don't think anyone, again, maybe you would be. I think you have your own business, but if outside of that, I don't think anybody would get hurt. That's all I had to say.
Thanks, Doug. Anyone else?
That's such a question. I don't understand the rollover. So you have reserves of about seven hundred thousand. You take five hundred and you left two hundred thousand. Is that?
Yeah, so so that's not not the entirety. Yeah, it's not the entirety of our reserves. Uh, but um having an accounting and finance background myself, it's not, it's routing one year to pay the next, okay? And that's why my goal has been to reduce that number uh to zero eventually, okay? And create a reserve fund range that the board elects must be between here and here so that we have a rainy day fund. To apply it, you know, something like COVID was ever to happen and we had to steal for from it in order to plug our budget and and pay our expenses if revenues drop. Who knows this year with everything going on, how that's gonna pan out, but um. We keep the reserve fund in a range that the board sets and therefore each year our budget then is a zero balance budget.
So the reserve fund is X and the amount of money you're taking from it is five hundred thousand this year. What is the X?
Uh, the X is roughly between seven hundred to a million dollars.
And that's and that's established. Do we pay into that every year or is that simply taken out on a yearly basis?
So essentially, the way the budget has been done in the past, okay, uh is. The numbers are essentially inflated so that you have a positive income at the end of the year. Because you know that you're going to need some of it in order to plug the budget without raising taxes ten percent. So uh. It's not the best way to do balanced budgeting and 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 clear budgeting from the municipality standpoint. So essentially, if we bring that number all the way down to zero, we would keep a reserve fund that we could use if we had to. Instead of consistently relying on it. That's the goal.
So I understand that. I guess the question like state has a reserve fund, has a rainy day fund. I I work in.
Yeah, and they don't use it to plug the budget.
I guess my question is, what is our reserve fund? How much are we taking from it? What will it be next year?
So. So yes, so uh in our audits, you can see what the true reserve fund is each year. The last time it was an audited, it was audited, I believe it was seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, essentially, that is a million four on five thirty-one of each year. The next, because last year we took seven hundred and fifty thousand of that, right? The next day, essentially, in June, on June first, we take that seven fifty, plug it into this year's this current year's budget. Therefore, it drops, you know what I mean, just to seven hundred and eighteen thousand. So it's 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 not the best way of doing true accounting. And that's why we're we're getting away from doing that.
Oh, thank you.
Lisa.
Um. So, thank you, Molly, because I had questions about the street lighting too. Under income for the other public safety. It was seventy-five hundred, eight thousand, and not now it's ninety thousand. Is that the school resource officer?
Yes.
Okay. Um, under the mayor's.
Had to show, I'm sorry, we had to show. Yes, to make sure the balance, the budget is balanced for every dollar that comes in and every dollar that goes out. We had to balance it. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Under mayor's contractual expenses, uh in two thousand twenty-four, it was eighty-eight hundred. In two thousand twenty-five, it's eight thousand. In twenty twenty-six, it's twenty thousand dollar.
Yep, so uh in that, we included all the monies uh basically out of out of the budget comes uh the cost for attending uh training sessions, night comm, et cetera, for the entire board.
Okay, that's a weird place to put it, but if that's what the control office tells you to do, uh, that's what you do. All right, that question was answered. That question was answered. Uh, parks. So in twenty twenty-four, the actual Maggie's back was forty-one thousand dollars. This year, the budget is seventeen thousand and five hundred, but you've almost spent all of that. And next year, you're gonna increase it by fifty-six hundred to twenty-three thousand one fifty. Is that enough?
Yeah, so we we split some expenses out that were included in parks that that shouldn't have been in there.
The forty thousand. Like, so before you just had. Different things in the budget and now the forty thousand that you've spent have been spending is in different places.
Yes.
Okay.
For instance, we we broke down uh. We broke down some of the details of some of those part-time summer help that we have uh into actual summer help instead of just being lumped into the park program. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we allocate, you know, that we knew what was personnel.
Hmm.
What was the uh youth director, you know, broke that out so that it's not just lumped in with parks.
All right, thank you.
Sure, thanks, please.
Mike. Uh, is there, so two years ago, we lost the dispatcher. This year, we lost the court. Is there anything you guys earmarked to reduce services this year?
No.
No. Yeah. Good, I'm glad to hear it because there's some things we probably haven't paid for to. Not be in the court. Uh, secondly, public safety, as I sit here in a fire department uniform, is by far our largest segment of our expenditures. It's grown over ten percent two years in a row. Like, that can't continue. Okay, just you cannot have your largest segment of your expenditures grow over ten percent year over year over year. Is there a plan to? Or we might have been catching up on stuff. I don't know the historicals there, but.
So there's there's a couple of things that, you know, that we've changed around in order to make things more efficient. It's just gonna take some time for those things to work their way through. Uh. I. I believe very much in efficient running things efficiently and we're we're definitely making some steps in order to to make that. I mean, you're absolutely right. Ten percent increases is just not, it's not sustainable.
Thank you. Steve.
I was tailing off that. I was tailing off that question. Your fire truck showed, you know, what he's saying is that that's the largest. Why do you lump all of them together so that you can't kind of see, you know, how much is fire, how much is police, how much is?
So generally, that's how OCA links it all together when you have to do our annual update reporting. So uh surely for the next meeting, I'll gladly break those out.
Yeah, I was just curious if it would help you itemize where, you know, where the highest costs are and and how to possibly. Examine them to not have it going up ten plus percent.
That that might be answered by the software uh that we've rescheduled.
Yeah.
Which was the purpose of of getting it.
No, I understand that. I just, you know, just seeing that as a lump sum that was concerning to me is like when you talk about how you've allocated and broke all these other things out. And then there's this big, huge pie piece and it's got three major components to it. Why aren't we breaking it?
Yeah, not necessarily always the most helpful way to show stuff, but.
And that and that was just a visual aid as well. Obviously, as as you know, the budget is broken down into very small line items.
Oh, of course. It would just out. Of an house. How much of those percentages are baked into one of those to make your. The car.
Yes, and 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 that's fair, but again, just just uh so you know, it's not, that's not all we see.
No, I I know.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Paul.
Is there is there a legal reason why we have to keep Bill on? I mean, I like Billy. He's a great guy. But. Right. Right now, uh. We have, he has to be because the when they did start the audit, he he was the treasurer at the time of the audit, so he has to finish it out. He has to sign off on it once he. Because because of the audit. Because once the audit is done, then we'll be gone.
So it's illegal.
That's illegal, I guess.
Anyone else?
Cindy.
Yes, uh Cindy Price. Uh, I don't think there was ever a follow-up from anybody what happened with the money that we saved by closing the court system.
Yeah, I mean, it's uh. It's 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 all baked into the budget. I mean, for instance, the the amount of fines that we anticipate collecting for the next fiscal year. Uh, basically is a wash with the with the expenses that we're anticipating for closing the court, including the last the last month of the court. Uh, including the time that our employees in the court are going to be in order to transition everything over to college.
So really not saving that money for summer?
Not this year. I mean, there's it remains to be seen. Yes, it's baked into the budget. If if we included, for instance, all of the labor that we would have in overtime for the police, uh all of the salary for the two court uh clerks. Uh, the village justice's salary, the associate justice salary and and all of the other expenses that go along with the court. Yes, it's a savings and it's all baked in here. It's not easy to just say, well, here it is. It's in the budget. It affects the numbers.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Frank.
Uh, sorry. That's right. Uh, is there a plan in the budget for larger spenders such as the fire truck?
Yes, so uh. After this budget is is approved, we're gonna start really getting into the software and analysis program that we uh now partner with and subscribe to. To take this budget. Uh, once it's approved, log it into this program and then start to look at different scenarios of different equipment purchases that we need to make. So that we will explore uh once we pass this budget and start working with that tool to show how capital expenditures into the future will impact future budgets. And yes, it's in there.
So this budget cycle, it's in there?
This budget cycle, it is not. It is it is anticipated to be in the twenty-sixth one.
They go up ten percent a year, so you guys know.
I get it.
Okay.
I get it.
Probably more.
And we're hoping, we're hoping so everybody save.
Seven hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand.
Everybody say a prayer because we we're still in line for uh the the that grant. Uh, uh, so if everything works out.
We'll pray.
Yes, everybody. But it is in that on payment is in. Anywhere else? All right, let's close the public here.
Anybody online?
What?
Anybody online?
Amy. Anybody online that comments? Through the minutes.
Well, we can first replace that we set a new dates for the public care for the Little River.
I thought we were in the. So we stop cable.
Yeah, I think we should say.
Public.
Um, we're we're planning to, you know, it was an ass due public care for the Little River uh project. Uh. Matt Rides of La Bella was not able to join us this evening, so we're gonna request to cable that till the next meeting at at four twenty-one. And we apologize.
All right.
We've already moved it. What's already?
We need a motion to approve the minutes of the March seventeenth.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Uh, I'm listening, Peter. All right.
Warrant number twenty X. One hundred, one thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars thirteen cents. Warrant number twenty XX, sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven, eighty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. General warrant for three twenty, twenty-five, two hundred and ten dollars and thirty and ninety-two cents. Warrant number twenty-one, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Water, fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. Sewer, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, five hundred and thirty-nine. And thirty-three cents totaling three, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and six, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, thirty-three cents. Payroll number twenty-one, one hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Take a motion to approve the warrants.
Second. I'll listen, Peter. Bye.
And Brian, next is the amendment to the.
Okay, so uh. After the budget was introduced, we did some uh recalculations of the insurance. Uh, costs and breakdown for the budget. uh costs and breakdown for the budget uh for this next year. And so we need to make a couple of budget amendments prior to approving the budget. In addition, since we've discussed a couple of other budget amendments, we can make those as well. So Tim, do you wanna start by making a couple, uh, you need to read just the ones with the dollars.
Okay, um. All right, amendment just follows. Line A one-nine-one-zero-point-zero-four-zero-zero was thirty-one thousand, thirty-nine, and will be corrected to thirty-two, six, sixty-five, an increase of one thousand, two, seventy-six. Line number A three-one-two-zero-point-zero-four-zero-five was forty-three thousand, five hundred. Adjusted to fifty-seven thousand, six hundred, an increase of fourteen thousand, one hundred. Line A five-one-one-zero-point-zero-four-zero-five was twenty thousand, twenty-five. Directed to twenty thousand, nine fifty, an increase of nine twenty-five. Line A five-one-four-two-point-zero-four-zero-five was fifty-three hundred dollars. Adjusted to five thousand, eight hundred, an increase of five hundred dollars. A seven-one-one-zero-point-zero-four-zero-five was six thousand, one fifty. Adjusted to six thousand, six seventy-five, an increase of five twenty-five. Uh, line A eight-one-six-zero-point-zero-four-zero-five was six thousand, eight fifty, adjusted to six thousand, nine fifty, an increase of one hundred dollars. And line F one-nine-one-zero-point-zero-four-zero-zero was eleven thousand, adjusted to eight, uh eleven thousand, eight seventy-five, increases, uh eight seventy-five. Um, total.
No, go to, uh, go to the sorry. So the uh seven-six-two-zero dot zero-four-four-seven is a thousand dollars increase for transportation for the seniors. And the total is eighteen thousand, four sixty-two.
I have a question. Does the sheet you emailed me also had a seven-six-two-zero-point-zero-four-zero-five with an increase of one hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah, Mary Jane, we checked everything and we don't need that. Four twenty, uh eighteen thousand, four twenty-six is the correct number. So. All those in favor? Uh, we also need to do the budget transfer or uh amendments that we just discussed as part of the final budget. So we agreed on the revenue side, account one-seven-one-zero, public work services, to increase that by three thousand. Under court security, on the expense side, uh account one-one-one-zero dot zero-one-one-zero uh that to amend to three thousand for court security. I think that was everything. That, Molly, does that match? Okay. And so I will make that motion.
One second.
All those in there?
Hi.
Uh, with those amendments, does someone want to make a motion for approval of the budget? Make a motion?
I'll second that. All those in favor?
In September, um, we have to move the September fifteenth meeting. I'd suggest to the twenty-second, because my time is on the fifteenth.
I ask if we can move it to the uh twenty-ninth, because uh Rosh Hashanah begins at sundown on the twenty-second.
Okay, the twenty-ninth.
Can we do that? Monday, the twenty-ninth of September, rather than the fifteenth, move the fifteenth to the twenty-ninth.
Anyone, uh, also have a problem?
Uh, we also gonna move the nine-one meeting, which is both on Labor Day?
So I'll move that we, uh, uh, change.
All right, yep, that's.
So, uh.
Okay, um, I move that we change the date of the second meeting in September twenty-twenty-five from September fifteenth to September twenty-ninth.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
David, you're in.
Perfect, uh. Looking for the approval for thirty-two pairs of boots at one hundred dollars apiece, as well as thirty-two pairs of pants ranging between fifty and sixty dollars uh for one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. A total of four thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. This will give everyone a complete class B uniform for all active members of our department.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Two budget requests, uh, one is for the water pump station to repair the shaft and impeller on motor slash pump two. That is eight thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Uh, we do not have an additional part of that. We have an additional motor for that setup. Um, but the impeller and shaft itself, currently that pump is off. It could be used in case of emergency if pump one goes down, uh but the leak time is currently twenty-four weeks on that part and installation. The second is for twenty-five hundred dollars. That is for pump two at the high service, that is to re-drill the motor mounts and uh so that we can lay the level and align that, just so it runs smoother and is part of the P S. Let's vote thirty-two hundred, uh twenty-five hundred. And that's a much shorter.
That's all out of the water, don't you?
That would be all out of the water.
Make a motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
And then one final quick thing, the, we have to do forty total tests for the lead and copper tests, uh which is up from the twenty-four that usually have to do. With the board's approval, I'd like to put together something that we can put on Facebook, looking for the public's involvement. We've had a historically difficult time getting people to actually move forward with the test itself. You have to deliver it the day of. Wait overnight, supposed to sit for eight hours, and then have it put out the next morning. Uh, we would put out a post saying that if you would like to be a potentially part of this, email the water department email. You may or may not get selected. We're gonna prioritize people that we know have the service lines. And it has to be spread out through the entire village. Can't just be in one specific.
Do you need financial for the tests or is that?
No, everything's.
So if anyone here wants to be part of the program to test the water and, uh, please email water department at menandsandline.gov or.
You're on the list, Mike, or.
I've, I've done it before, it's easy.
Very easy, it's just, it's nice if we had.
Is it okay with the board if I just put it on Facebook?
Yes, please do.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Perfect. I'll get it approved and put it out to them.
Thanks, David. Uh, on Thursday, in the village office, uh, I was pleased to be involved in opening the bids for the south end infrastructure project. It's been a long, 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 long time. Uh, we were a little nervous about some of the costs uh for the, for the work. Uh, and I'm pleased to announce that all of the bids came in well below where we were expecting. The bids ranged from a total of nine point three million to twelve point two million. Um, it looks like, uh, pretty confident, I could say this, that the entire project will be done uh using the funds that we were initially allocated by EFC for the project. So it basically came in at where we expected it to be when we started putting this together uh six years ago, six years ago, um. The uh award for financing uh was given to us, I think, four years ago. And in that time, surely, the world has gone upside down and, and, and the initial uh estimates for this work was closer to seventeen million dollars. So we are very thrilled that it came in, uh, much lower. Uh, Labella is reviewing all of the bids to make sure that all the documents make sense and they are reaching out to the bidders to make sure that they are clear in their numbers. We'll have a recommendation probably within the next week or so, and hopefully the board will approve uh a contractor to start that work on uh the meeting of the twenty-first. Um, and according to the contract, the work is supposed to start within forty-five days of the bid being awarded. Very exciting. Yes. The, no.
I know comments at the end.
That's all, go ahead.
Is that the entire project or is that phase one?
No, the entire thing.
That's.
Everything. Uh, we're, we're additionally looking at potentially if, if the lowest bid pans out, uh including some sidewalk work, which was not initially included, uh as a definite. Uh, and uh potentially some tree installation, uh that we could use, uh, you know. Additionally, there's some additional stormwater stuff that we didn't include. Uh, because stormwater is not part of this, but it makes sense if we're digging up the road to make sure that the storm basins and all of that is, are sound, uh, and so if, if, if it works out, we'll, we'll get more done than we initially anticipated, so. Okay.
Line officers. You got the list, do you want me to read it?
Don Glass.
The fire company at their, their April first meeting uh elected the following officers, Dave Ogden, fire chief, Mike Stewart, first assistant chief, John Dudley, second assistant chief, PJ Robinson, captain, Tony LaFari, captain, Dick Jer, I can never say his name, Jezzerinsky. Yeah, that's right, lieutenant. Um, Matt Jezzulukka. And Mike Rizzi as lieutenant.
Out motion?
Okay, so uh, we've been asked again this year by Rabbi Mordechai Rubin of uh Chabad Colony to declare April ninth Education and Sharing Day in the Village of Menands. And so I'm proud to offer a proclamation doing so tonight. Whereas a quality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country and our society at large, and in the Village of Menands, we strive for the betterment of all of our citizens through an increased focus on education and sharing. And whereas in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach the students how to live, forming and strengthening their uh moral character to make a better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole, imparting moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society since the dawn of civilization. And whereas a global spiritual leader, uh and leading advocate for the advancement of education, the Rebbe Rabbi Menachem M. Schneerson stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas Education and Sharing Day is observed each year on the Rebbe's birthday in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world. A day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. And whereas April ninth, twenty-twenty-five will mark a hundred and twenty-four years since the Rebbe's birth, capping a year in which thousands of new institutions and initiatives were launched throughout the world in tribute to this celebration. Now therefore, I, Seth H. Harris, deputy mayor of the Village of Menands, and Brian Marsh, mayor of the Village of Menands, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April ninth, twenty-twenty-five to be Education and Sharing Day in the Village of Menands, and call upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to those within your communities and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all. Uh, in witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the Village of Menands to be affixed at the village hall, two fifty Broadway, this seventh day of April in the year two thousand twenty-five. And I move that this proclamation be, um, be moved as a resolution.
Happy to second that.
All in favor? We share this with the school and, um, they send it, I guess, she sends it out to the uh faculty and, and staff.
Wonderful, and this, uh, we have this proclamation that, uh, unfortunately Rabbi Mordechai Rubin was unable to be here tonight as he's teaching at Sienna College uh tonight, but he will pick this up from the village office sometime this week before Passover begins. Thank you.
And I've been reviewing the, the use of cell phones and the SIM cards that we use for the fire department, the police department, um, and the fire inspector and the building inspector. I recommend that we switch from Verizon to T-Mobile. We can save approximately a hundred and some odd dollars a month. This annually could be a thousand dollars or more savings. With that, the fire department's gonna be getting three new iPads, the water department will get, and, uh, the building department will get two new iPads. And the, the fire department currently has three tablets that they're gonna switch over to the, to the chief. So the chief will have the tablets for their vehicles, so they'll, everybody, so they'll actually have more than what they, it, it and that, that, this, it's, goes from roughly eight hundred and seventy-three dollars a month for Verizon. It's gonna go down to seven seventeen a month, and we actually are including, we get more than what we currently have.
Is this a multi-year contract or is this?
It's a, it's, it's also under state contract.
Oh, okay. Is it, I mean, but does it go for?
It rolls over every year. We've been with Verizon for many years, but it's um, and with that, everybody that has a ability to cell phone, will get a new cell phone, will get a new iPad, so. And, yeah, and that, and the SIM cards for the police cars, we, and we tested them while the police have, currently have a SIM card in one of the police cars now. And we had no problems, they took their cell phones out, went to every part of the village, and then, then didn't have a problem with it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, the village's going to switch our cell phone service for, uh, people to, uh, T-Mobile.
I'll second.
Um, for many years, we've been looking to put Wi-Fi up at Grant Scander Smith Park. And the original estimate, I got, I got three estimates. Originally, or two estimates, one from Spectrum, it was gonna be twenty-two thousand dollars to do that. I got another one from ABS, and was a little more than that. Team, while I was talking to T-Mobile about this, I asked them if they, they have a cellular Wi-Fi network that they could put up at the park. And the total cost to install it, to create the, the access points, there should be three of them, there'll be one by the pavilion, one by the light post in the middle of the park, and one down at the concession stand. And the total cost is two thousand, two hundred and sixty, eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents with a monthly charge of a hundred and ten dollars.
Uh, and the two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars can, uh, uh, can come out of the park stand ramp that we have, so.
Is that for each tower or just for all three towers?
That's all three towers.
And that's a one-time cost?
Once that's a one-time cost, then it will happen to be a hundred and ten dollars a month after that.
Yeah, well, during the pandemic, I had, uh, absolutely wanted to do this, especially with the number of people working from home. Uh, and I, I think this is wonderful. Um, so I'd be happy to, uh, move that, uh, the village, uh, approve uh installing Wi-Fi from T-Mobile at a cost of two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents for three access points, uh, and a monthly, uh, that's one time, and then a monthly, uh, fee of a hundred and ten. for three access points and a monthly, that's one time, and then a monthly fee of a hundred and ten dollars.
I just want to clarify, Brian, you said that this two thousand two hundred and eighty-two would be covered under the...
Yes. All those on paper.
Hi. Don, when do you think they would get to this?
Couple weeks.
Okay, good. Once, once the weather gets better.
The nice thing about this is, is we can broadcast the concerts in the park.
Yes.
On YouTube and any other event can be broadcast. So I think it's a very positive stuff.
That's, that's fantastic.
CDT.
Okay. Years ago, Manans partnered with Marley and Cahose. And Green Island to be partners in CDT buses that, I'm sorry, the CDT bikes that they install in several locations around the municipality. The cost increased to five thousand dollars a year. I had a meeting with Don and representatives from this program at CDT and they reduced the cost to twenty-five hundred dollars per year. And they're giving us basically this, this twenty-five year for free. So we don't pay for twenty-five until our budget for twenty-sixth. And then we pay twenty-five hundred at the, at the end of twenty-seven. They have agreed to move the bikes from the park to the village office so that all the bikes are along Broadway. And so I would like, this is going to come out of, where we say this was coming out of.
So what I can tell you, living there, that those bikes don't get used by village residents. People get off the bus at the bottom of the street and walk up and take off. And most of the time, there are few to no bikes there.
Yeah. That was something we can discuss.
Is something that any of us are benefiting from?
So the ones at the park, people from Broadway.
And if you're moving them closer to Broadway, they're definitely not going to get used by village residents. So I just, I don't know that, you know, we can share doorbell footage of how they also ride those bikes up and down the Manan Road. I just don't know that this is something that any of our residents are benefiting from, or that we should.
Maybe we should, we should promote it more with our residents. I want our residents to be able to...
To be there for them to ride.
Well, that was something, that was something that I did discuss with them was if, if there was often no bikes to be had. They addressed that and made sure that there's a minimum of twelve bikes always available. Because it was disappointing, especially one year when half the summer was over and I didn't see a single bike at any of the locations. So you're absolutely right.
Would you be interested in putting a bike rack closer to the subway where they're doing the whole stop? Closer to the...
Yeah, that was something that I did discuss with them, is putting more of them on. I'm glad to table this, they can actually pull user information and see who subscribes locally to the program. And we could look at those, those numbers and make a better decision. So I, thank you.
And I think as many opportunities as we have for that, the better. So if they can, you know, put one down there by Subway, as Nick mentioned, that would be great. But, and as well as promote it. I'm a, I'm a big promoter of the Bike to Work program in general, so. Okay.
Part of the agreement for the South End project is that we were going to get a, rent a trailer to run the field office for the engineers and stuff. And the cost of that was going to be fifteen hundred dollars at least a month. We spoke to Eight Hundred North Pearl, and they're willing to rent us office space for eight hundred dollars a month.
For use by the contractor.
For use for the contractors, they have that.
Engineers.
And it's, and they, it's...
Just the engineers?
Yeah, like, like, like...
Anybody's...
G C.
It's basically like a satellite office, so that the plans are there, the contractors can go in there, the engineers can go in.
Because I called, I called out about why not the trailer, so.
It has bathrooms, it has a cafeteria, it's just much more...
And it's closer to the thing.
Essential, central, yeah.
Because we would have had an additional cost where we would have had to hook up to electricity. And it just, and there was no real good place for it.
I know, who would want that in front of their house?
Well, I think, could have been a case to show it in this lot and case to show it. That's what I was...
Actually, that's a station there.
That's a staging area, I'm sorry.
For the equipment and stuff.
So we need a motion in order for the village to sign an agreement with Eight Hundred North Pearl.
I'll make a motion for the mayor to sign a temporary lease agreement for Eight Hundred North Pearl for use by the contractors and people working on the South End Water School Project.
I'll second that. Hi.
It's time to renew our annual service agreement with Dwight Plumbing and Heating. The total cost this year is five thousand seventy-eight dollars. It did not go up from last year. And they do all, it's all the preventive maintenance for here, the whole village, all the village offices and like the water department and stuff. They, I mean, they, they do the PMI and change all the filters and check and calibrate all the thermostat and stuff.
And I just ask why we didn't put this out to see if someone else would give us a better price?
What's that?
Why we didn't put it out to see if someone would give us a better price?
Yes, so...
We've done this four times, and these guys were always lower. And every time we go out to bid for a plumbing project, these guys are always lower. And the one good thing with them is they're always here within an hour of call, and we've had a problem.
Don and I talked about that, and there's some efficiency that happens with the same company knowing the system already. And that's, I think, why they're always the lowest, so.
So I'll make a motion to renew our service agreement with Dwight Plumbing and Heating at a cost of five thousand seventy-eight dollars this year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Mayor's report.
The, let's see where to start.
All the guys who...
Yes. So as I think everyone knows, there's been some problems with the sewage treatment plant in Albany. They are finally starting what I believe is a hundred million dollars worth of improvements to help upgrade the facility, which was built in the late sixties, early seventies. It's part of the Clean Water Act. Hopefully, that will stop some of the smell issues that we've been having in the village. We received a notice of an amended seeker. So that means that they have settled their disagreement with Department of Environmental Conservation and are moving that project forward. The New York State budget is still in the works, and we don't have any clarity as far as whether the additional AIM funding is going to be awarded to municipalities, additional chips funding for transportation and roads, temporary municipal assistance, all of that is still up in the air for the upcoming fiscal year, which should have been in place by April first. Still working with the Office of Court Administration to finalize some of the necessary steps to close our court, move everything to Towne Colony. Still working on that. I'm happy to announce that Mid-City Plaza has finally gotten commitment for their five hundred thousand dollar grant that we, that we applied for on their behalf for the Restore New York project. So they, they will eventually get those funds dispersed. It's just a matter of time now, so that's a wonderful step forward. Was, I think, was great, so. With everything that's going on in Washington, I think I mentioned that there could be potential hangups with the money that we had requested from Paul Tonko's office that was supposed to bridge the gap for our, our funding for the South End project. Now that the bids have come in more in line with what we expected, I'm going to look at a couple of projects that the board can consider to re-allocate the funds that get committed to another project. And we'll be talking about those potential projects. The other option was for us to use those funds in the twenty twenty-six budget. But there's, again, no guarantee that we're going to be getting. So we'll talk about that in the next meeting. April is Doning Life Month for anyone who wants to be an organ donor. You can go to Donate Life. And we're going to be doing a flag raising on Friday at eleven AM to hold the Donate Life flag. What did we decide? Two fifty. That's going to be right here at eleven AM on Friday. And in the budget, we included some money to hire a grant writer to, to work on grants for the entire village, not just the fire department. Julie Burline has written the grant for the fire department and has been successful. She also can represent the village in a whole number of different grants. Her normal fee for doing that in total is forty thousand dollars. I had a conversation with her. Because she likes us so much, she's agreed to do the entire village for twenty-five thousand dollars total. I believe I put in the budget, how much, twenty, thirty?
Twenty.
Yeah. Yeah. For her specifically, so between the amount that goes to the fire department, I'd eventually like to take over that expense as a village expense, not out of the fire department's budget, to do all of our grants. I gave her a list of some items that we might have projects for, and she, for each one, gave a potential grant that she thinks might be applicable. So I would like the board's permission to hire Julie Burline of NJ Bourbon Company to be the grant writer for the village, for the entire village's grant needs at a total cost of twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Would you, not to hire, you mean to have a contract with them?
Yes, yes. So Burline put a grant writer in his budget for police of twenty-five thousand dollars. She would, she would do that work. So it's, that's in your budget, correct?
The twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, yes.
That's...
No, that was to cover grant matches.
Got it, okay. All right, well, we have the, the money and the, that I put in. So she can write, she can write grants for the police department, though, so.
And this will be the start in the new budget here.
That's correct. That's correct.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Over in favor?
Hi.
So yes, that'll start sheet one. Okay, for the dumpster rental for the Village of Manans, it's kind of been an absolute chaotic scene. One of the dumpsters included lithium batteries that started a dumpster fire in the fire truck. I have written basically a rules and regulations that everyone that rents our dumpster must sign that says that you're not going to put all of these prohibited items in it when they come to paint the dumpster. I'll share that form with the board, but it's a step forward in dumpster rentals to start.
May first.
May first.
And it's also the form that's on the website.
That's all.
Tim.
Okay, liaison report, okay. Got a couple. I'll, I'll go first with the liaison report from the Village historian Kevin Franklin, who was a part of our Little River Working Group for the Little River Project. He starts seven minutes, Village historian has been busy making meetings and providing research for the ongoing Little River Project by, by providing historical research, photos, maps, copies, and old, of old Warbleed and early colony town tax records to the committee regarding the Little River area and the railroad spur that led the main line of the Delaware and Hudson Railroad just east of the present day Morgan Lennon, through the flats area via Tressel and Iron Bridge to connect the Corning Iron Works on Breaker Island in Hudson River. Corning Steel and Iron Works closed during depression in the eighteen nineties, and the iron bridge spanning the Little River to Breaker Island was dismantled by the Adely family and sold for scrap during depression. The lot was used again to connect the Capitol District Regional Market in the nineteen thirties and three times the old Ward's metro warehouse, and later Wicks Lumber. The spur was finally abandoned in the nineteen eighties as it has become unsafe and the railroad to continue operating on it and tracks were removed. The importance of this research, of course, was for the tidal waters of the Little River between the west bank of the Hudson River and three prominent islands of the Hudson River between Manans and South Troy as the past. Police photographer for the Manans Police Department, I developed our own black and white films in a small, small darkroom with police department. Past Chief Francis Bush Kuprowski had been the official photographer for the department. And when he became chief, I voiced an interest in photography. And it was during this period that I purchased my old thirty-five millimeter film camera and began to take photographs of various areas in the village. And he provided a great deal of photographs that he had taken back in the day. And he has even more that are yet to be developed. I was taught to develop film and the tricks of the trade of photography, which I still use to this day. Some of the film was developed but never printed. The village recently purchased a film and slider reviewer because you had so many negatives, you know, and you don't want to print stuff that you don't need. So we had a purchase of a slider reviewer so I could go through the slides and see which ones were things that we could actually use and, you know, which were worth printing. I found that it was very helpful in identifying sites. I photographed over forty years ago, some of which should increase areas of the Little River. There are many rules of developed film that I have to research through. In twenty-three, twenty-four, the village was preparing for its hundredth anniversary. In twenty-four, it's an incorporated village. And it was my responsibility to write several different storylines for inclusion into the proposed book to commemorate the hundredth anniversary. One source of the early Manans history came from past Manans historian Howard Manans. From his fiftieth Manans anniversary book, where he wrote a chapter called "Frigid Places and People" based on his memory of the village as it was about nineteen hundred, when he was a young man. Howard's memory and his description of both the east and west of Broadway from Warbleed City Line to the Albany City Line were a foundation for using over nearly forty years of collecting Manans history, including photographs, maps, images, and short biographies to enhance Howard's text of nineteen seventy-four. It is my understanding that the one hundredth anniversary book will be printed very shortly after a final, after a final review, and I look forward to being in attendance for that review as well. I was a pro, it was a project that required many hours of work and meetings with the Hundredth Anniversary Committee, and I'm grateful for their support and to have to work with them. I continue to research about the Manans history. And just this week, took a scrapbook of nineteen forties era photographs to the Manans School, on Manans Road, the old Manans School, Manans Road, showing student projects and several photographs related to students at school activities which supported our nation during World War Two. All of these eight-by-ten professional shot photographs will need to be digitized and added to the ever-growing digital files related to the history of the village of Manans. The scrapbook was given to me yesterday by Beth Harbor. So Kevin, Kevin does a great job on this stuff, and he included a couple of photographs for this liaison report. And the stuff he has is worth its weight in gold, because it's unbelievable what he's accumulated. I don't know where he keeps it all. I really do not. Secondly, Parks certification from Diane McFarland, although she's retired. She's still, she's still, she's still also, you know, so this is Diane's report. Let's see, yeah. My gardening job is much abbreviated compared to the gardening job before. I retired at the end of twenty-two. The woman who took my position didn't, did that work out, I guess. I do minimal prep work. Matt Kaluski at the DPW has taken much of the heavy bed prep work. Last year, I worked with him showing him some of the gardening jobs. So I do most of the planting and do most of the maintenance and watering of, it's shared. I believe by a couple of the guys at DPW, as far as their attention goes. She states that I, as my retirement, I've not taken on any new large projects. The village had a weed problem at the garden, at the garage. And the DPW laid river rocks to control the weeds so that they did not have to use chemfuls, thereby making the area more attractive. We are down to eight cement pots. The four original pots finally cracked and crumbled. I will continue with the spring annual and fall mum plantings, as well as the winter greenery in the pots. I believe my hours were reduced to about sixty last year, and I'm not sure about future projects. But she's staying involved and we're hopefully going to be able to find someone that can take that on shortly. But thanks to Diane for sending that while she was on vacation, by the way. Last and finally, the youth coordinator, which many of you may know, we lost our youth coordinator in February. So a job posting was, was put on the website. So if you know anybody who might be interested in the position, I understand there's two applications that have been submitted to, and the job basically consists of, according to what we've posted, setting up summer program activities, overseeing the youth counselors, maintaining youth records, assists in special events, including community night, Easter party, tree lighting, which is, you know, of course, come up, tree lighting and other village, village events throughout the year. The salary is six thousand dollars a year and it's twenty dollars per hour for the summer program. So hopefully we get somebody who can fill that role pretty quickly then. Well, we do have some applications. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Tim.
Just like to report that the final fish ride is this Friday from four to seven. The pride dinners are fourteen dollars and pizzas are twelve dollars. And Don, quick question regarding the wifi in the park, the twenty two hundred, is that a one time fee?
Yes.
I'm not, it's not yearly basis?
It's a one time thing. It's just, we actually buy the cradle points.
Gotcha. And also with that, are we able to monitor the wifi usage?
Yes.
Okay.
There's, I'll have access to a portal to show how much usage, how much.
Not only that, like the websites as well, want to make sure that nothing bad's going on at the park. Yeah. So website usage, monitor the websites, something on anything bad.
I think it's built into there. I think we can create parental guidance.
Correct.
I forgot to announce a couple, a couple of important things. If I can just jump in. Officer PJ Stone was recognized recently. Kevin, you want to talk about that?
He was recognized as the lead instructor of the year for New York. You know, he took on a big responsibility implementing that into New York. And it's been a great transition at school. You know, he's been very happy with it. They've expanded. They're in three different grade levels. And he's done a great job as well, well deserved.
Congratulations, Tim. And then recently, Dan and Rob were involved in an EMS call that we received some positive feedback from Colony EMS. Don, do you want to elaborate on the comments from them?
Yeah. I received a call from EMS the next day. There was a cardiac arrest at Manans Garden Apartments. And it was a reversal and the main reason there was a reversal because of, excuse me, Dan and Rob getting there so early and flying the defibrillator on and defibrillating them. And it was, they were, it was a, everybody was there and said that they want to boat them beyond what they normally say.
And they brought him back.
They brought him back and he's returning home next week.
Wow, that's, that's wonderful. Sorry, I have a report from the building department. Lyle has been hard at work, not just with the usual inspections, but he's been working with a number of new homeowners who've come in and purchased some buildings that have required a fair amount of work and has helped them figure out what's what, what they need to do to bring those properties up to code. So that's pretty good. I've actually got to see one of those on Wolford recently, so that was, I'm glad that he's doing that and I'd like to see him keep doing that. And maybe I mentioned to him that we can, I, if people purchase a home in Manans that is in need of work, that they reach out to him. Then just on a completely different note, you know, going along with the good news that Don brought up, I want to welcome our newest resident to Manans, Lavender the dog. I'm sure you've heard that the Mohawk Hudson Humane Society is caring for her right now and I'll be honest, I'm not, I'm not really a dog person. My sister is, but after hearing that story, my sister and I have have offered to volunteer and help in any way that we can over at the Mohawk Hudson Humane Society. It's, it's just reprehensible what happened to her, to the dog, and we wanted help in any way that we can, so.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
You're welcome. You're welcome. That's the least we can do and and it's going to be from what they've told us, it's a long road to recovery, but very long road, but we'll, I want to help in any way that, that I can, hear something like that.
Thank you, Molly.
All right, piggyback on Nick. This Friday, the last fish ride, the auxiliary will be doing a bake sale, so make sure you bring some extra money for that. Manans School put out a fantastic production of Beauty and the Beast. They congratulate them. I remember being there. We brought a company in to do it. Now they're doing it totally in-house, so next year, if you didn't go see it, please go see it. They had a successful spring fest despite the rain. It was inside, everybody was dry. The next Board of Education meeting is four twenty three where they will be going over their budget as well. Two other things for them, four twenty five is the Brooks Barbecue. This is a fundraiser for seventh graders. They can keep going to Camp Ginger Cook. They're all responsible for selling tickets. If you know a seventh grader, buy a ticket. If you don't know a seventh grader, I can connect you with one. And they're also on May ninth, holding their PCA multicultural festival again, and they're still looking for volunteers to hold a table to represent where you're from, so. And then.
That was a pretty cool event.
It's a very cool idea.
I experienced food from many different nationalities that I never would, would, you know, it was, it was really cool to meet some of those people, so I enjoyed it.
You can go all around the world in one day. And. Yep, definitely, yep. And then I just got the newest seniors newsletter and Diane has them as busy as they can be. They have all kinds of trips coming up. And that's all I have.
When's the Father?
Oh, the Father Daughter Day is May third.
Okay, Don.
Recently, I spent two days with Homeland for charity going over our cybersecurity. And they were very impressed with everything we did. We have to make some minor changes. I will get to the people with the changes. One of the things, one of the changes is that everybody has to change their password every three months for their emails and stuff, and there's a few other things that we have to do. You don't have to do it.
That's painful. I know. Listen, like.
I have a question. So this was happening at Union and now we did where there's like the two step verification, so we only have to change it every six months.
They, they.
Can we ask?
I'm only going by the Homeland Security guy's recognition.
And AVS can help.
Yes. We already have this two step verification. Everybody has that anyway, but this is added security. And they, and I, I don't remember exactly, but it's, I believe it's got to be twelve characters long. God knows how I'm going to do that, but we'll worry about that later. Part of our, part of our Homeland Security, we do phishing tests with everybody that has a village email. And we did forty eight, forty eight phishing emails went out and nobody clicked on them.
Slap.
The village office, we have the access system now at the fire department and the police department. The village office is also going to get, piggyback on to that. And I apply, I, I got permission last month to apply for the electronic record keeping for, I did submit that grant request in. And I'm waiting to hear back. And do you have anything else? Well, the only one thing I got on the May third meeting, either Seth or Mary Jane are going to be taking over the minutes for me because I'm going to be in North Carolina because my daughter is getting married.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Congratulations to you.
Yeah, May third is the saddest.
Right, it's the first May meeting, the fifth.
The meet, no, the wedding's the third, whatever the fifth, so that.
You need to get right back here.
Are the lot of the charging stations at the village office back online?
Um, not, not as yet because we have to get the final code from, or National Grid's got our, I'll check with that. But the ones at the park are online.
They are.
Yes.
That was my shift. Okay. Our neighbor was asked.
Yes.
Yes, I'll tell her. Public comment.
Well, quite a few things. Now, since I reported about the black feet with red and white diamond symbols on it, it's left open at the west end of Lemon Road. Well, a few days later, I was delighted to see their public works guys close the black feet. And I'd like to thank them for getting the job done, which I had reported down here in the Manans Fleet. Second, while driving on Broadway here in our village, I observed our DPW guys posted one dead end sign and west end of of the east and west part of Oakland Avenue, which I had been requesting, plus I wish to thank our DPW guys for getting the job done. Now, I plan to do my job as the official groundskeeper for Manans Little League Baseball Organization during between middle and late April twenty twenty five, which much of that year, last year I couldn't do it because I was sick. And I regret that I was unable to get it done, but I'm glad I'll be able to do it this year. Now, while driving on Broadway here in Manans, since I reported about one fire hydrant with a white reflector stick on west side of Broadway, just south of McDonald Circle was bent. I'm delighted to see that the reflector stick was straightened, plus I'd like to thank the PDW guys for doing a good job. Now, while driving on Hart's Lane, Lewis Avenue, I observed one yell's children at play sign with black symbols on it. There's no words on which stands next to one utility pool, number four, connected to one yell's marker stick that's fading and peeling paint. This children at play sign is located on the avenue and that sign needs to be replaced. The signpost itself is all right. It does not need replacing. Is that going to be? You said you're working on getting those signs replaced? Is that true, Brian?
Yes.
I'm glad to hear it. Now, while visiting the former Olympic bowling property, bowling lanes property, I observed south and east sides of its building being vandalized with graffiti on its wall. Two large windows are partly broken. I reported the problem to the Manans Police. Now, in the event, it's a construction Manans, new Manans Bridge between Manans, Detroit, Pat. I'd like to give my full support on that bridge. It needs to be done. It's been there more than ninety years and it's time to get that Manans Bridge replaced. What kind of bridge it's going to be? It's going to be arch bridge? Or is it going to be suspended bridge?
We don't know. They're not sure yet. They need three hundred million dollars to do it, so.
Yeah, looks like that isn't going to happen right now with things going on in Washington, DC. We were going to probably get a lot less money than we expected it. Now, I thank you for letting me speak on these important village items. Thank you very much. And I felt, you're welcome.
Paul.
A couple of questions that you can send us about the construction project down in South End. I have a pretty vast experience with construction projects and management. It's always been the history that general contractor provides an office spaces for all owners to use facilities. So I would suggest that if you have a general contractor to take over the expense of eight hundred north burl. It's going to cost you money because they're going to charge you to clean the rest.
Well, this is, the office is, it's, it's because our engineers needed a field office. And so that's where they came in and they're going to both use the same thing, but it was all part, all the money for that is actually coming out of the grant money that we got, so it's, we had to, we had to pay it, but it's come, the money's got to come from the grant, so it's not going to be an expense to build.
Okay. I've worked as a construction manager for architects and the trailer where I worked on it was a general contractor trailer, not something supplied by.
The way that, the way that the bid went out, it was part of the, it's part of the thing. It's all part of it. So instead of paying, what we did was instead of paying, paying the fifteen hundred dollars for it, it was, we made it eight hundred and we don't have that expense. We don't have to set it up, but that'd have to be the contractor. Nobody has to do it, but we would have to still pay the fifteen hundred dollars a month for the trailers.
And in my experience, if there's a low bidder at nine million and there's high bidder at fourteen and a whole slew of people in between, there's a reason why that low bidder is only nine million and it's usually not good. So please take that into consideration.
That's LaBella's job.
Okay, well, make sure you're, you're, you're looking at LaBella. The sidewalk was part of their process too, right? Sidewalk, okay. Because the sidewalk's still on Brookside. They're still tripping hazards on Brookside. I watched the walkers from Gervive Centers every day. There's one in front of six, one in front of eight, and they're trying to run in front of my house at twelve. They're not, you know, you don't hit your foot into them now, but the height was so severe that when they ground it, they didn't grind it out far enough. So now you're walking along, all of a sudden you hit this little hill like a ramp where you're walking along and you hear then all of a sudden it's down like this. I watch them every day. I just want to make sure that goes back in minutes again, as I mentioned a long time ago. Because I don't want to have to be the one to page for the guy who falls in front of my house.
Yeah, I was gonna, just to duck down on that, what they did when they grounded them, they are so smooth that if it's wet and you wear dress shoes that are no tread, slip.
Yeah, we can look into that issue. They're sure that that wasn't going to be the case. If it is, then we should have them.
I'm just telling you my experience. I've slipped like half a dozen times.
On those, on those slots.
In front of my house as well.
We can have a call from the company come back and take a look.
They are smooth and smooth.
Yeah, they're not supposed to be that smooth that they created that hazard, so that is something we can.
That's what happens when you grind down that aggregate like that, though.
It's smooth. Don, we'll make that call. Thanks, Paul.
That's it.
Mike.
Apparently I'm just getting older much faster than I thought. What is the need for wifi in a park?
So the concession stand asked for, asked for, it is a possibility, broadcasting the park events on YouTube for anyone who wants to participate.
We're going to have enough service to bandwidth for.
Yes.
Yes.
Hundred and, what they said. Hundred and twenty five people per access point can do it. I mean, what's not going to be, you know, like having, it's going to, not going to be the fastest thing in the world, but it's still, you still have access to wifi on it.
What you covered, Gary, the band between the.
Don't quote me on this because I spent a couple of weeks that I read the thing. It was like eight hundred feet or nine hundred feet per thing, but it covers most of the park. There's the corner by where the people fields are, probably won't reach there, but it'll do like the whole baseball field and that whole area. And by the gazebo and in the whole
I have an idea who suggested that out of the concession band and I'm willing to say that's crazy. It's a hard front mark. We spent millions of dollars for federal government, the state government, the local government, get kids outside moving around, not staring at their phones, and now we're putting wifi in the park. They don't get old.
I know what, listen, I don't want to throw anybody in, but speak your way.
I have a feel, you know, she makes a mistake every once in a while.
Mike, no one wants to talk to anybody anymore. They just want to be on their phones.
You get cell service and wifi anywhere. The fact that the village is paying for it to be in a park just blows my mind, but maybe I'm old.
Thanks, Mike. Diane.
The South End project, is there going to be any kind of flexibility in this, you know, we have the laws and regulations here. There could be some flexibility.
You mean during the, during the construction? Yeah, we're working all that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And down below, where Wolford is, Willie's always been. There's, you know, there's an Airbnb there and there's a I'm not, I don't know who it is. There's a white commercial shop that parks there on a regular basis and he's always parks on the same side, whether it's night or not, it's night. I've never seen a ticketed. I don't, I don't know what the dealers was in. If he's, he go on by midnight, I mean, I'm not going to let down the street at midnight or whatever. It eats people on by midnight, and I'm not going to let them down three at midnight or whatever.
Personally, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the truck you're talking about, but we can look into it.
Yeah, it's, you know where the Airbnb is? Corner of Foxman and Wolford.
Okay.
It's, he parks right on the Wolford, you know, even with a nice hat, but smooth side to go drive a Cobra off.
Yeah, I've noticed that, Tim.
Yeah, he's always.
Yes.
I don't, anyways, I'm not, you know, helping against the Airbnb, but I'm in front of your house, that's your, it's whatever. And then the Melty Bolton, I'm just, Diane, I'm just confused. If I'm.
If you're currently on the list, if you've got the Manan's activities, you don't have to do anything. If you, if you want, if you want to get it and you're working in the activities, I need to know your name and address.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Did you get it?
What?
Have you been getting it?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Diane.
Very nice.
Definitely Mr. Stewart, I am old. I don't understand. I know you already did, and you already spent it to broadcast concession apart one month. I don't understand why you're, I just don't understand. I just disagree with this. It's and my wife never makes a mistake.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, so any update on the assessment of the property beside my house?
Still working on that. Should have something probably by the next board.
By the next board meeting, okay. One other thing, my daughter Evie is a seventh grader. She's participating in this.
Barbecue?
Yeah, we're gonna cook.
Yeah, that thing.
So if you need tickets, we haven't bothered yet.
Okay.
We have a seventh grader.
We have a seventh grader. She's a stalwart member of the community. She killed it as Mrs. Pot in the play. And just an outstanding citizen.
Sounds good, thanks. Anyone else? Go ahead, Lisa.
I can say I've been working at lots of other, at lots of other libraries that a lot of libraries provide wifi in the parks because while we are all privileged to have internet at home and good cell phone service, not everyone has a privilege. There are people in our community who wifi in the park would be helpful to their lives. They could.
Do homework.
Yes.
So it is, it is an Albany County initiative, where Albany County has tried to promote for those exact reasons, that wifi in public spaces tends to allow people to sit, enjoy the public space, and potentially read or look at news.
Yeah, they can get their library books and their audiobooks, and they can download them over the wifi.
Even though some municipalities are looking at village-wide wifi provided, which is interesting, specifically the village around Lake is looking at that, so. Yes, yeah, because that's with the very same, same problem.
When, when the cost was tens of thousands of dollars.
I attended webinars about getting grants.
It didn't make sense, you know, it was going to be challenging to justify, but this seems like a very affordable initial step forward.
Well, Lisa just dropped a good point. Is that one thing to add to the grant list?
Yeah, so we're getting, we're already using a grant to pay for it, so it's a hundred percent up for buying that grant, yeah, and we're still because of the initiative with some volunteers to do the bathroom work instead of spending that money via contractor, we were kind of looking for things to enhance the park, but so.
Right, one more thing. Tim, in your statement that you made with Kevin.
Yes.
It was my Aunt Peggy, not my wife.
Oh, I'm sorry, he wrote, he wrote, very good.
She's a lot older. She has a lot more stuff.
Okay, okay.
Very cool, because this is my grandmother in the.
You don't want to.
Anyways. All right, we have two matters for executive session. Personnel matter and one contractual.
Okay, move that we enter executive session to go over one personnel matter and one contractual matter.
Give me a second.
Have a good night, Tim.
I'll be there.
How's it going?
You're doing well. Well, I'll see you later, okay?